So we'll call this meeting into order. Maida, could you please confirm that we are in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
And if you would please call the roll.
Commissioner Zer, here. Commissioner Becca. Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Harder. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nardine.
Here.
Thank you. We'll now move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I'm very excited to announce that we are able to bring back a tradition that my predecessor as president, Dr. Torres, started. And that's by having one of our district students lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm really excited for tonight. Tonight's student pledge leader is Quinn Kaye, a fifth grader at Flynn Elementary. Principal Schmidt says Quinn is a strong leader in the classroom, participates in safety patrol, and is one of Flynn's morning announcement readers. She's also very involved in softball. We are truly pleased to have Quinn here with us and to lead tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. So those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join Quinn and the rest of us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the love, the honor, the peace, the justice, and the freedom of our nation.
Thank you, Quinn. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of tonight's agenda. If I could hear a motion to adopt the agenda.
Still moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to our recognitions. First is our Roosevelt Reading Program and Gaga Ball Pit. Superintendent Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chair Nardine, board members, student representatives, and guests. Recently, Roosevelt wrapped up their fourth annual two-week reading program, which occurs thanks to a donation from Lutheran Church of Good Shepherd. Additionally, Roosevelt recently finished installation of a new Gaga Ball pit. Yes, I've seen this game in action, folks. I saw it at Mann's Elementary last week. This was purchased with funds from an Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation grant and funding from the Roosevelt PTA. For those of you who have no idea what Gaga Ball is, it's similar to Dodgeball, played in an octagonal pen with a foam ball. It's fun for all ages and pretty safe, too. No head shots. Actually, after watching kids play, I think it may be impossible to do so in the pen. Thank you to the many groups supporting these fun and educational activities at Roosevelt, and thanks to Principal Ben Dahlman and his staff who work so very closely with many groups for the benefit of the Roosevelt students. Principal Dahlman, would you please introduce your staff members and community members you brought along this evening?
Gladly. Thank you.
Please end this hearing.
I will just leave it all. Well, first off, thank you and thanks for having us, too. With our Roosevelt Reading Club, this was put on. It was a donation given by the Lutheran Church of Good Shepherd. This is our fourth year we've had it. Teresa Berg, our interventionist, led this group this last August, which has been great. We have the Literacy Boost Camp, which is a great partnership with W. E. O'Clare. Some students either aren't into the program because there's only so many seats available, and for some, it just doesn't work with the schedule-wise. So this has worked out really well to pair with us at Roosevelt. Good Shepherd also gave us money to run it this last year, and we had additional funding, so that was able to go towards our Gaga Ball pits and also towards our playground updates that we're looking to do. And then we also, the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation funded part of that part as well, which is really generous of them. And I would like to introduce to you also, joining us from the Lutheran Church of Good Shepherd, Jerry Shea, Deanne Swenson, and then Pastor Josh is here with us as well. And then Tammy Root is our partnership coordinator, who did the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation grant, too. So thank you for support, and we are just kicking off a new Roosevelt Program Playground Drive, starting right now, too, and they've been very helpful. So, thank you.
I got a picture with you and your plane.
Yes.
Hallway or where?
We don't hear it.
Yeah.
And our second recognition tonight is welcoming our new student representatives. Now, once again, turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three student representatives in our inaugural visit and being part of our school board. Samuel Schmitz is a junior in the Eau Claire Virtual School, the ECVS. He's born in Eau Claire and places a critical emphasis on education. He joined ECVS in its inaugural year and has worked to advertise this, enhance it for future students. This is his third year being part of ECVS and ECASD. He's currently working toward an IT Software Development Specialist Associate's Degree through CVTC. He wants to take as many AP classes as he can, and he works to advertise as many classes to as many students as possible. He looks forward to assisting the board and progressing the ECVS charter, mission, and vision. Aislinn Berg is a junior at Memorial. She is pursuing several AP and Harvard Online courses, and she's looking for opportunities to hone her leadership and communication skills. She also works at a local bakery and plays a few musical instruments. As student representative, she aims to accurately convey the array of student opinion in the district to aid in making decisions that will directly benefit a larger portion of students and teachers. And finally, we have Reed Locum. Reed is a senior at Eau Claire North. He's also earning an associate's in business management from CVTC. After school, Reed is also part of several student organizations, including Forensics and his club, the Student Initiative. The Student Initiative aims to provide peer-to-peer tutoring after school as well as mentoring support for juniors and seniors that are planning for post-secondary life. As a student representative, he plans to advise the school board on tailoring solutions for student success. Welcome to all three and thank you to these fine representatives. Aislinn, Reed, or Samuel, do you have anything to add or just... Okay, thanks very much. Just wanted to give you that opportunity. Once again, welcome.
All right, we'll now move on to our public forum. The board allows citizens a four-minute period to address the board, and the board does not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. Tonight, our first speaker is Kristin Nelson. If when you come up, you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kristin Nelson, and that's true that I live in Eau Claire and have a student. This week, I received a wonderful letter from Superintendent Johnson about how great the school year had started, about all the wonderful things that were happening, and how excited the students were and how excited staff were to be back in school. Except for my student. He did not get to experience this first week of school, this first full week of school, or last week. He was quarantined due to COVID-19 through exposure on the bus. He has been barred for a full two weeks of in-person instruction. Not just one, not the seven-day with a negative test and no symptoms, but a full two weeks. Not 10 days with no symptoms and a return to school, but a full two weeks. So my perfectly healthy asymptomatic child is once again, for the third year in a row, for every year of his public school instruction, it has once again been disrupted by COVID-19. Now, the CDC guidelines online do state after seven days. These were CDC guidelines, quarantine can end within... Or after 10 days, quarantine can end if you are asymptomatic. But Eau Claire School District is insisting on a full two weeks. Surrounding districts and local private schools have taken a different approach. I feel like this shows it really value education and understand the social, emotional, and academic toll that it is taking on our students to be removed from the classroom again and again and again. Now, I would like to point out that in a normal flu year, 2018 to 2019 flu year, that there were 80 childhood hospitalizations for 100,000 cases, childhood cases. For COVID-19, the hospitalization rate is 49.7 per 100,000 children, which is demonstrably lower. It's just over half. Now, what I'd also like to point out is that a close contact, like my child was on the bus, does not guarantee that he is going to get COVID. That is not 100% chance. And according to the CDC, that after seven days and a negative test, the highest probability that a student will or a person will become contagious is 12%. 12%, or after 10 days and a negative test, the range is from 0 to 10% likelihood of becoming contagious to others. I feel like this is a very small risk, and I feel like I understand the need and I appreciate the need for a seven-day quarantine. But if a child's asymptomatic and healthy with a negative test, I do strongly feel they should be able to return after seven days or even after 10 days. There's a difference of four days and this almost entire week of in-person instruction, which is invaluable. I want my student to have time with his teacher. I want my student to have time with his peers. How many times is this going to happen? How often is he going to miss out on two weeks of school or any other student? Now, I come from a stable household. My child will be fine. But I have greatest concern for those children who school is the most stable place for them. For that extra four days or that extra seven days could mean, you know, that's food insecurity. That's loving staff that care about them. That's somebody recognizing them and saying hello and with a smile on their face. And I worry most about those students. My other concern, what I would like to say, the principal at his school did reach out to me. She was the contract tracer. And she said that most cases do not occur, most close contact cases do not occur in the classroom. And so many of us require, or we use the service of busing. That's an essential service for many families in this region. And what is the board going to do to mitigate the risk on the bus? So this doesn't happen again and again and again. The city of Eau Claire received millions and millions of dollars in COVID funding. They're trying to decide what to do with it right now, I think.
All right, Ms. Nelson, that's your time. Thank you for being here and sharing with us tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the next item in our agenda, which is our reports. We'll start with budget development, as always. I believe budget development has elected Commissioner Lyons as their chair for the upcoming year. So I will turn it to you, Commissioner Lyons.
Yes, thank you. Budget development meet on September 9th. And as the committee has been charged, we're really focusing on all things referendum-focused. So we did review the upcoming referendum work. We did look at the referendum timeline and also took a look at a number of the things that the referendum could address. Facility needs for the next five and 10-year. And also thinking about a staff-community survey that would be sent sometime in the winter of 2022. We also talked a little bit about operational needs and really what we need to do to put together all of the data that we need to put together that referendum question. Later tonight, I believe it's item 10, we're going to be talking about some of the things that we looked at, and we'll be sharing with the board a variety of referendum questions to get an appreciation for the board of what things kind of need to be filled in. And that will be item 10 tonight, I believe, with some help from Abby Johnson.
You, Commissioner Lyons. At this point, I'd like to motion for a 10-minute recess to discuss some issues with our executive secretary and some of our administration. Is there a second for a 10-minute recess?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are in recess for 10 minutes. The board conference room is available for board members and student representatives. During this time, we will re-adjourn at 7:20, or reconvene, excuse me, at 7:25. We will reconvene the meeting. Thank you for your patience, those of you watching along at home and those of you here with us. We'll move now to our next agenda item, which is the legislative update. Our legislative liaison is Dr. Johnson.
The State Assembly Committee on Education will hold a public hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, September 14th, at 10:00 a.m. in Room 412 East of the State Capitol. The committee will receive public testimony on the following bills. Assembly Bill 446 relating to reading readiness assessments, and Assembly Bill 420 relating to payments to an independent charter school authorized by a tribal college. On September 9th, President Biden announced a set of sweeping mandates he intends to impose as part of an action plan to combat the resurgent COVID pandemic triggered by a surge in the Delta virus. The president also called on states to voluntarily adopt COVID vaccine requirements for all school employees. The president's plan would mandate that teachers and staff at Head Start and early Head Start programs, teachers and child and youth program personnel at the Department of Defense, and teachers and staff at Bureau of Indian Education Operative Schools get vaccinated. Wisconsin's Association of School Boards Executive Director, John Ashley, calls for board meeting civility. His statement mentioned civil disagreement and protest are cornerstones of our democracy, but attempts to intimidate school board members and physically disrupt school board proceedings are not acceptable. He further states being passionate about the well-being of our children is commendable, and the public is welcome to voice displeasure or disagreement with their school boards. However, threatening to physically harm school board members or their family members, shouting profanities during school board meetings, or attempting to prevent school boards from executing their constitutional governing roles crosses a line and should not be tolerated by our communities. The U.S. Department of Education sent a letter last week reiterating its commitment to ensuring children with disabilities and their families have successful early intervention and educational experiences in the 2021-2022 school year. On August 23rd, the Wisconsin Department of Justice Office of School Safety presented a webinar entitled "Preparing for and Responding to Protest Activity." The webinar was for educators, law enforcement, and prosecutors that will likely respond to these protest actions. A recording of the webinar is posted on the Office of School Safety website. On August 18th, President Biden issued a memorandum to U.S. Education Secretary Miguel Cardona directing him to use all available tools to ensure that governors and other leaders are providing a safe return to in-person learning for the nation's children. The memorandum includes statements vowing that nothing should interfere with the goal of ensuring the safety in our school communities. The presidential memo directs Secretary Cardona to review state actions and determine whether governors and other officials are providing students with the opportunity to participate and remain in safe, full-time in-person learning without compromising their health or the health of their families and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. For both consent agendas tonight, the board considers approval of the consent agenda with no discussion. The board has been provided background information on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. If any member wants to discuss an item, it will be pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately. In tonight's superintendent consent agenda, we have the following items. Human Resources Employment Report, 2020-2021 Budget Adjustments, gifts in the amount of $85.50 for the period of July 1st, 2021 through July 30th, 2021, payment of all bills in the amount of $6,136,175.34, and net payroll in the amount of $2,997,118.1 for the period of July 1st, 2021 through July 31st, 2021, and Project Lead the Way equivalency. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
I'll move.
Moved and seconded. Maida, if you would, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Zer.
Yes.
Commissioner Becca.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Yes. We'll now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board has two items on its consent agenda tonight. Minutes of Board Meeting, August 16th, 2021, and Retirement of District Level Policies Related to Board Governance. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to our Focus on Results for the evening. That is the follow-up on high school results from our August 16th, 2021 meeting. I'll turn the floor over to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Nardine. I'd like to introduce for the Focus on Results. Four weeks ago, we had the first component of this with high school achievement. There were some follow-up questions and more data and more results discussed. We have Kim Kohler here tonight, as well as Dave Oldenburg, to continue this discussion.
Can you hear me?
Good evening. We were just trying to figure out, one of the presenters is joining remotely, so we needed to figure out some logistics. I'm going to drive the presentation from here and let Michelle and Dave take the presentation.
Kim, can you hear me?
Sorry, I did not include Michelle Radke, Director of Assessment. Like Executive Director Kohler stated, she is not available in person tonight.
Can we do an audio test for Michelle? Would that be okay?
Yes.
Michelle, are you able to unmute and say something?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Are you ready for me to start?
We are.
Okay, so I don't, I can't see the screen, so I will just tell you when to... Oh, there I can. Okay, can you go back a slide, though? Sorry. Okay.
Good evening. I am Michelle Radke, the Director of Assessment, and I will be presenting tonight with Dave Oldenburg, the Principal of Memorial. Tonight, we will be discussing the organizational structures we are working on creating at both a district and school level.
You want to advance it, Kim?
Our work moving forward is committed to focusing around the foundational components of the EMLSS. These can be found on the left-hand side of this graphic, which include organizational structures, strong shared leadership, positive culture, and family and community partnerships. This framework that you are looking at was built around a vast amount of research and the ANS systems assessments, including the SER and the TFI. The SER is an academic systems assessment, and the TFI is a behavioral system assessment to help us brave the EMLSS. Over the past summer, we have worked with our system leaders to create capacity around the implementation of the EMLSS. With a focus on organizational structures, strong shared leadership, positive culture, and the positive culture, the district worked on creating capacity around school improvement plans that are deeply rooted in the foundations of the SER and TFI. In the systems assessment, it includes things like equity, high-quality instruction, strategic use of data, collaboration, family and community engagement, strong universal supports, Tier 2 and 3 supports, and strong shared leadership, to name a few. During the summer data retreat, system leaders were focused around a systems assessment, norming the systems assessment, and then strategically using that data to help identify areas of improvement. Schools then worked on creating goals that included both a systems lens and a student outcome portion. The schools used the SER as their systems assessment to drive the systems portion of the goal and choose the student outcome data that they believed they could have an impact on by making change in their systems. The high schools have collaborated around their SER, and they have chosen their goal to be the systems portion, to be embrace a vision centered on high levels of academic and social-emotional success for all learners, so that they can have an impact on student outcome of decreasing the number of students on the D and F list by 20% over the 21-22 school year. Because this is a change in the way goals have been written in the past, one of the focuses for principal meetings during the 21-22 school year would be how to strategically use leading data to make change in schools. Schools will be expected to monitor the progress of both their systems portion of their goal and the student outcome portion of their goal. Tomorrow, which is very timely, principals will be collaborating around the systems portion of their goals. They will be brainstorming the data needed for the systems portion of this goal so that building leadership teams can review the data on a regular basis to help them determine how to best support their staff to make system changes that will be identified in their goals and action plans. The high school will brainstorm how they will break down the systems goal of embracing a vision centered on high levels of academic and social-emotional success for all learners. They will ask examples of questions like, what is the evidence that our school has a mission and vision for success for all students? What is the evidence that our school has a growth mindset? What is the evidence of modeling self-awareness and cultural competence in our school? How will our school monitor for disparities based on demographics? How will we identify patterns in interactions and practices that advantage some groups of students? How will we identify patterns and systems that create inequitable outcomes? And how will we create professional development and coaching structures to implement culturally-responsive practices? The expectation will be for schools then to work with their building leadership teams to identify the action plans around the answers to these types of questions. Schools will also be expected to monitor their student outcome portion of their goals. Both of the high schools will work in the next couple of months on the structures they need to put in place to determine the data to be reviewed on a regular basis, who needs to review that data, determine supports needed for both students and staff, and create data rules for Tier 2 and 3 supports. Some of the data the high school are ready to review are grade distribution, attendance, discipline, and common assessment data. Schools are collaborating with the Assessment Department to create dashboards like you see on the screen that they will be able to effectively use with their building leadership teams to review data on a regular basis to help them make data-informed decisions. These dashboards will provide schools access to both their systems level and their student outcome data. We have, the Assessment Department has worked collaboratively with school counselors, high school counselors, school psychs, and principals to create at-risk indicators. These came from the DUZ data that the state uses as a dropout early warning system. That data was lagging data for us, and we wanted to create a system that would have more leading data that we can make change around. So the high schools, they are going to create systems around these indicators to determine interventions needed for the students. What you are looking at here is a sample dashboard of students that would be a Level 1, which are students on track, a Level 2, students on watch, and Level 3, which are high-risk in the areas of attendance, math, ELA grade marks, and discipline data. What they are able to do is they are able to click on the hyperlinks on the bottom to determine who the students are. What you are looking right now is in their systems. They will look at the students and determine who are the students at risk by looking at the Level 2, which is indicated by yellow, and Level 3, which is indicated by red, and determine an intervention plan for these students. From this report, staff are able to easily see who are the students on watch and at risk, and then dig deeper into the data. When they dig deeper into the attendance data, they are able to see the periods of the day, the number of students, the periods of the day, the number of times a student missed that period in that last month, and then how many times you're to date. They will create and use data protocols and data rules around this data to help them make data-informed decisions on the interventions needed. When looking deeper at the course data, they are able to see the course that the students are at risk of having a D or F in, in both English and math, and how many Ds and Fs they have outside of the core areas, and then dig into what are those other areas that they are receiving a D or F. Other data the Assessment Department is working on creating for high schools are predictors of success of a high school student. The nation and state have done a vast amount of research around predictors of success. This work is labeled "redefining ready" and have indicators of success for college-ready, career-ready, and life-ready. A team from the district is working on creating data sets and dashboards around the data that have been researched to be predictors. Some of these predictors include 90% attendance rate of the freshman year, a 2.8 GPA every semester, a C or higher in Algebra II and Trigonometry, participation in post-secondary courses, advanced placement course earnings of an A, B, or C, advanced placement test with a 3 or higher, ACT meeting the minimum bar for benchmarks in all areas, participating in community service, work-based learning, and extra and co-curricular activities. Once data acquisition and dashboards have been created for schools, the schools will be able to start using this type of data within their systems to help them guide their action plans more. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Dave to talk through the organizational structures and strong shared leadership they are using at the high school level to actualize the EMLSS.
Thank you, Michelle. At this point, I want to highlight or reiterate that collaboration amongst both high schools, so we have a shared organizational structure, has been embedded in this work. So you may see an iteration or an intervention that is locally driven by specific data that you find at North High School or Memorial High School, but the organizational structure, the universal access, the ability to react to leading data is embedded in both. the universal access, the ability to react to leading data is embedded in both high schools. So you can see in organizational structures that we have an intentional design of building organizational structures that embeds strong shared leadership, informed by leading data is what we find embedded in the slide. So some of the highlights that we'd like to share with you is common preparatory time in the larger departments that allow collaboration, real-time collaboration that is embedded into the master schedule is a reform that we have for this school year, so that staff may consistently engage with their course-level PLCs. And the work of these PLCs is to construct a reform, a common informative and summative assessments, checks for understanding, to react to data that's gathered by the PLCs and then intentionally design and share instructional practices when we find success, and then also reform or construct Tier Two or Tier Three needs for supporting students when we do have a gap in that achievement. Both high schools have created something called ELT or Husky time embedded during the student schedule or the day, so we have universal access to students that need intentional supports, and we can react to the student achievement in real time, be that reforming an area where a student did not demonstrate proficiency in a learning standard, or where we have an opportunity to stretch a student that demonstrates aptitude or interest in a specific area and required an effort to go deeper. So we have an intentionally designed, universal access to social-emotional learning issue that's also embedded in this intervention or this ELT or Husky time to support the social-emotional learning for all students to increase the core competencies wrapped around perseverance and relationships. That's been identified by ECASD Social Emotional SCL Implementation Committee, and we've embedded this into universal student access for student learning. So the goal is to increase student self-regulation and to be able to limit our office discipline referrals. As we mentioned, ELT and Husky time is put in place and will be informed by student-leading data wrapped around the DNF list, and then will allow us in real time again to design intentional supports that react to the needs that the students have here and now. Using this leading data and both student achievement and implementation of the EMLSS and building school improvement plan to construct building professional development is another feature that we have embedded at each high school to reflect the organizational structures to our strong shared leadership that is embedded in the EMLSS. So the ability, as Michelle talked earlier, to not only react to student achievement and student data in real time, but also then construct meaningful professional development for staff that also reacts to the current realities that you may find in each building as we move through the school year. Educational researcher John Hattie tells us that response to intervention, formative evaluation, teacher-student relationships, and teacher clarity all have a significant statistical achievement that drives the effect size of student learning, that both closes these gaps and accelerates student achievement for all students. And that's the research or the data behind some of the work that we're intentionally moving forward about this year. Excuse me. Questions you have for Michelle and I or Kim?
Thank you, Principal Oldenburg, thank you Director Radke. Comments and questions from board members, and of course, our student representatives, you're welcome on all of our discussion items to add your comments and questions as well. I'll remind you to just, don't bother to use it because we have microphones to be recognized. I will start by saying thank you, Principal Oldenburg. And last time I had asked specifically what's our goal in terms of what can we do with this DNF data, what are we shooting for with the interventions that we talked about last time? I appreciate a little bit more information about what's already been put in place. As a parent of a Memorial student, I know that that ELT time has been going on. I'd be frank, he's given it mixed reviews, but that's what I expect out of him for any school initiative. But I see the value in it, even if maybe he is a little hesitant to try to do so.
And to be fair, we're just in the first month of a, hopefully, generational implementation and intervention to student achievement. So we've not gotten to at either high school actually intervening on the student achievement portion. We'll start to collect the data that we can react to and then intentionally design some of that Tier Two and Tier Three business here in the upcoming weeks. Right now, we've really intentionally designed professional development, just our student development, student curricular work around Character Strong, about what it means to be an O'Day and be a Husky, and then work on those transitions back into the school, because now we have students with us five days a week, and the schedule certainly feels different, especially for some of our early learners that have only been with us during the pandemic.
My only question with the goal, and it just came to me tonight as I was watching it, is where does that 20%? If we were to achieve that 20% reduction over the year, I assume that's as opposed to last year's, like the 2020-2021 school year?
Good question.
Where would that leave us at the end?
Good question, Dr. Nordine. So twofold, we're going to react in real time to the students that are in front of us and observe that DNF list as we move through it. I would imagine the way that we're going to measure this is not only percentage, but the actual raw number of students, diminishing outside of last year, you last year was a powerful, the total volume of students on a DNF list by 20%. I'm equally as interested in skipping last year, but going back to the three previous years, six semesters there, aggregating that data and then reacting to that. So what are we doing, what we're doing now is so intentionally different, how does it impair to some of the historical achievement that we have? And then also reacting to the students here and now in front of us and how we're helping them achieve.
Thank you.
Dr. Nordine, one of the things that we have found is that after term or quarter one, our DNF data does increase over time. So our hope is, is that after quarter one, instead of that increasing over time, we are decreasing that over time. So that's what's going to be important when they look at that data here and now.
Michelle, let's crack both in percentage and then just raw number of students. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
I appreciate the clarification that was brought forth. Could you address where in this data, because I guess I had made the comment, I specifically wanted to look at subject area, content area, and realistically, where are we in terms of our strengths, where are we in our perceived ability for interventions? Do we see overall, would this ELA reading and our math see a better progression? Because do we know where, how far both of those particular areas, as the examples that you guys have provided here, do we know which one's more than likely to see or reach this kind of 20% decrease by content area?
To Mr. Johnson, I have that data for you, and I can provide that to you. For the last three years, we do have it. So I can give that to Maida tomorrow to distribute to the board.
Very succinct, thanks, Michelle.
Boys from the speaker.
I know.
Yeah, thank you.
Also add, Dr. Johnson, just in my work with schools across the district, I will say that a lot of this is, if we think about the organizational structures that we have in place, our math teachers really are the leaders at the secondary level as far as they're, they have a lot of clarity around their outcomes, and they have clarity around collaborative procedures and assessments. So I don't, I can't predict, but with the premise that those organizational structures and teacher collaboration is a predictor of student success, I think the math department is, in particular across the district, is onto something.
I would agree.
Representative Logan?
For the ELT time specifically, what data are you collecting to judge its performance relative to the other measures being taken to decrease the DNF rate?
Yeah, good question, Reed, thank you. So we will react most immediately, because in a high school, the grades are capital, right? Grades have a real or perceived significant value to students and their families. So immediately, we react to the DNF list. As we do that and we build interventions in that ELT or Husky time, we also then work on the staff development portion, the organizational structure of the staff PD, both on a smaller level in the professional learning communities and more building-wide, on best practices in assessment and instruction, reporting, grading for learning, things of that nature. So you really can disregenerate all students that maybe their achievement is muted because of being timed with work. That's different than missing a core competency, missing an essential standard. So that's some of the staff development that we work on. So we can address that in two folds. One is the grades that we're generating right now, and then how do we increase the efficacy of our grading and reporting and assessment to students and their realities? Might answer your question?
To me, it doesn't appear that there's much differentiation between how you're measuring student performance as a whole versus the effectiveness of ELT time specifically.
So I think maybe we approach it this way, is if we're able to produce the return on investment from ELT time and the updated master schedule that does meet our academic goals, then we've been successful. Is it because we've increased the capacity of staff and their ability to instruct and assess? Is it the intervention portion? Right, well, if we get there, I guess it's muted whether, which path is the correct way to go. I think you have to do them in concert.
Reed, I think one of the, sorry, I think you're talking about indicators of success. And anytime you have a new initiative and something that you put in place that you want to think through, what are the things that you want to look at to determine if that ELT time or that Husky time is successful? And that is one of the things that we're working on with principals and principal meetings, is how do you determine if there is success with something new that you are implementing? I think, is that what you're speaking of?
Correct.
So we're going to look more at what are those indicators, so our high schools can work on a structure that they can gather data to determine that.
Okay. And, yeah, I have one more question if you have time.
Sure.
Do you have specific measurements on the cost in dollars of the reduction of the DNF list using this current system?
Tell me more.
Are you able to measure the cost per student taken off of the DNF list?
Oh, interesting. So, well, can I quantify that in specific dollars and cents? What I do know is that the less students that you need to build something remedial, you know, maybe you're familiar with some of the remedial programs. We have summer school, we have an off-campus after-school, we've got different iterations to remediate students, and actually, we're quite good at that. But all that comes at a cost. Now, it can be a dollars and cents cost, it can be a time cost. Also, research will tell you that students are on the DNF list and they remain on the DNF list, that really bends their opportunity to do some of the things that Ms. Radke pointed out previously, to access some of the steps towards post-secondary readiness. So there's that measure, too. So I think you would evaluate this both in the muted student enrollment and intervention program, because the universal program with Tier Two and Tier Three supports embedded in the school day is able to help more and different students achieve. But then also, where do students then go with that achievement? Have we increased the amount of students that access upper-level programming, you know, a CBTC course or practically the Wey course, or an AP course or something? Because we saw and we reported last time, when students show up on the DNF list consistently, they just simply don't access the upper-level program. So I think that's a, there's an economic measure with that. That's a good question.
Thank you. Mr. Clemens?
So the improvement planning goals, the top meta-goal is to reduce the percentage on the DNF list. And then we provided a series of predictors of success, which you have up there on the screen. So I think, articulating this by saying that I think our focus seems to be on, in terms of trying to assist to put resources where students are struggling the most for one reason or another, or have impediments to their academic growth. So that's one indicator. What are some of the other indicators besides those, the student being on a DNF list, that may indicate that a student is struggling and, you know, may benefit from some additional attention, whether it's an academic measure or some other indicator?
Sure, so some of the things, so I'll go, and then Michelle wants to follow up, some of the things that we mentioned earlier. So attendance at the high school, students attending at a 90% or better rate, right? Office discipline referrals, there's a strong correlation in our building, at least somewhat of a correlation in our building, between office discipline referrals and then students that struggle academically. And dismissed instructional time, in addition to some other portion that we need to help the students self-regulate on. So part of the reasons why we have an SCL curriculum, we're going up to and working on that universal access. So those are a couple of additional indicators. So we use the DNF list, right? We use attendance, we use the ODR portion. I think that's the data that's the most nimble and leading for us to react to. ACT achievement and access to some of the post-secondary courses are very important, too. That's a little bit more retrospective, when you look at that, a little bit, other than enrollment, a little bit after.
I'll change for follow-up questions. So what measures are being used, or are the other goals for students who don't land or aren't flagged by that DNF list to ensure that, I think, this might be our greatest ROI in terms of how do we help the entire school improve, but what indicators are we doing to respond to students who aren't identified by one of these measures, but for whom we have additional resources would help them grow?
If we look at, can you hear me? When we look at Tier Two and Tier Three supports, we're not only looking at the students that need an intervention, we also have to look at those kids that need enrichments. And so when we talk about like that structure that is put in place for ELT time and Husky time, we need to go off of right now, student recommend, or staff recommendations of students that need to be enriched, and what does that look like? And so, and that could be, we could use indicators, staff recommendations, we can also use the ACT, ACT Aspire as some, who are those kids that need higher-level enrichment or Tier Two, Tier Three supports during that time?
I was also, oh, sorry, Michelle.
Nope, that's okay, I'm done.
I was also going to look at Kaiying to share, one of the things about the system that you see depicted here is that it really is across all departments. And so when we talk system, it's not just the principals that work to help students with this success, it's not just the classroom teachers. And Kaiying, I was wondering if you would be able to share a little bit of the work that Lisa's doing with counselors, because that leads into some of those, maybe, you know, they may be on the DNF list, but they may not, and what sort of wraparound support and counseling offer?
I can certainly try. Good evening. So to go along with what Kim had asked about, we are working on different levels according to our framework. If we look at this framework, as well as our PPIS framework, we look at providing universal instruction and support for all students. Students who need a little bit more than that, identified by data, then are given the opportunity to access what we call our Tier Two supports, and that is the work that we are strategically working with all of our counselors on this school year, as well as the upcoming years, to make sure that we strategically put in place interventions that meet the function of the behavior of the students. So that is a piece that we are going to be working on very diligently this year, with the hopes of identifying what Dave had shared earlier about our universal instruction with using Character Strong, so that other classroom teachers and other adults in the building are teaching that program, and then allowing our counselors to be able to do more Tier Two and Tier Three interventions.
And Kim, we're going to hear more about that next week, about those supports that are in place also.
Is that foreshadowing?
Yes, that is.
Get the right ELA.
Yep, we're going to talk more about SCL next week.
All right. Awesome. I do see you, Dr. Johnson, I'm just going to give others a chance if they haven't yet and I haven't come in.
and I haven't come in. Representative Berg?
I was wondering if you had any measurement of the actual practice of ELT. I was wondering if you were aware that a lot of students, at least at Memorial, don't actually see any of the ELT lessons because the teachers that they have don't present them. Do you have any way to remedy that? Do you have any way to measure it?
Well, that'd be new learning for me. If we have staff that isn't simply presenting the lesson, then we would just deal with that as a coaching opportunity. So what we've tried to do is make, as you know, most of the Character Strong or ELT lessons driven by Mr. Olson. So what we tried to do is reduce the variance among the instructors. So Mr. Olson comes on, we use some of the technology that he provides, either the lesson himself through direct instruction, or has supported the staff members by queuing the lesson and supporting the curriculum and instruction for that, for that day. And you've got a specific example, I'd love to visit with you. Thank you.
So Dr. Johnson and then Representative Logan lined up. I'm just going to see one more time if any of the rest of you that haven't had a, yeah. All right, so Dr. Johnson and then Representative Logan, back to you.
Yes, I would like, as we continue to get updates here, one of the concerns that I have is could we also get an update in terms of how well we are preparing the teachers to actually deliver this particular information? Because my concern that I have is, you know, all of education is always in addition to, and given the dramatic shift is something as new as this particular approach, you know, I would recommend or request that we consider other expectations of our teaching staff be delayed to really allow more universal competency with this actual new approach. I think it's interesting hearing from our two student representatives, some of the, they're going through it, and that experience is not as articulated as it's being presented. And so, you know, moving forward, we could also just be provided, I think, at least at the high school level, where teachers, their level of comfort in delivering and assisting with this particular intervention, if that could be provided next school round.
And Ms. Radke and her office have prepared a survey, Michelle, I believe you referred to it as a pulse survey that we'll implement to meet some of what Dr. Johnson is speaking to.
Correct.
And that's tomorrow's work during the principal meeting.
More foreshadowing.
Representative Logan?
And Ms. Berg, that'll help with some of the concerns that you've reported.
Will that pulse survey be distributed to the students, or who is that survey being distributed to?
Initially for staff, and then we'll also have a student version as well. Initially, it will be.
As a student who has participated in a number of CBTC courses, their courses are fully online, which means their only way to get teacher accountability is their course survey at the end of the course. I believe having a similar measure that is either weekly or monthly that is distributed to students, in order to get student opinions on how teachers are actually performing would be extremely helpful. Because my personal Husky time is with a study hall, and study halls typically have students who are less academically engaged relative to students who are in a math or science course. So I believe that there will be large disparities between the level of student participation, and the only way to accurately measure that would be to distribute student surveys.
Great idea. Our work with Ms. Radke, it's a great idea. We want to hear student voice, absolutely right. And doing so, it's something that's more universal and less anecdotal, great idea.
Misses R.
So, I'm not sure. Could you go forward, Kim, to the slide with the, what's going to be done? Maybe, there it is. This is what you guys are discussing? This is, am I, I, yes, it's like, I don't know, but I'll, okay. So, one of the things that I think would be helpful, because what I'm interested in are kind of the crosswalks between the academic and the social-emotional aspects of what we're doing. I think it's really important. I think the redefining ready stuff's going to be really important for that. But would it be possible to, as we move forward in monitoring, to see some examples of perhaps some of the work, some of the things that come out of this? Because I think this is really where we're, this is the meat and the potatoes of how we're going to bridge some of those gaps. So I think it will be really interesting to see, as we monitor this over time, what are some of the examples and the outcomes related to this work on this page specifically? That's kind of, that's all I really wanted to say.
So if I can respond to that, I'm going to go to this slide, actually, right here, because our work with principals and what our focus will be tomorrow is, what within the system do we need to develop or change or have in place so that the student outcomes are influenced? And so then if we go back to this piece here, the bullet points underneath are kind of the look force within the system. So that's what we're hoping our pulse surveys will measure is that systems work. The state assessment that we take for systems that sir is annually, and we really want to be able to measure our progress toward that more frequently. And so that's going to be tomorrow's focus, whether it is when high schools are back reporting their results, or middle schools, or elementary schools, or 4K, they will all be doing some sort of system work. So what you see here is what the high schools have committed to working on within their system. That bolded part at the top might look a little bit different if you're an elementary principal, but we will be sure that we bring that systems building and the, how we're measuring our progress there forward to the board as we present.
Seeing no additional comments or questions, thank you for tonight's presentation. Thank you, Michelle, for joining us virtually. Look forward to this week's presentation to see, you know, some of the connections to R3 and R4 begin, just like we've done with R2. Our next item of business is monitoring district results. Tonight, we have the first draft of our OE3 climate commitment. At this point, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson for his presentation on that.
Thank you again. Looking forward to sharing the first draft of this, as we spoke four weeks ago with OE2. It does, it feels better every time, you know, every time I put this forth, and I get, I get suggestions, I get feedback from our board members. And the thing that really helps is the connections in the community with experts in this field, and, you know, reading literature and Wisconsin School News and things that other people are doing, to share with our student board reps. With these operational expectations, some of them, there are other districts in the state and nationwide that have the same types of monitoring reports and evidence and such, where you can kind of, let's say, DeForest or Sun Prairie, you can kind of glean what they had said, or what they had put forth in their district. But on the flip side, with OE2 and OE3, and OE3 is what we're discussing tonight, there's nothing out there. So I'm kind of putting myself out there, but it actually feels, it feels really good when you've got some people that are willing to help. So the only part that I'll read, I think for the benefit of the audience, or any viewing public, would be the blue components of this with, and not going to my interpretation word by word, but with the opening paragraph, "The widely acknowledged urgency of the climate crisis, we commit to immediate and ongoing action toward a goal of achieving 100% renewable energy and carbon neutrality for the district by 2050. Throughout this action, the district will use evidence-based, transparent, equitable, and inclusive processes to preserve, protect, and enhance the natural world." The first paragraph in my interpretation, in Eau Claire, we have a tremendous impact environmentally and operationally. We have to look at not just internally what we have, but the actual impact on the entire community. You know, for example, just the transportation data itself, when I've examined the city of Eau Claire's data on what transportation means and the impact with emissions and such, it's a tremendous amount. So the second paragraph, then, you know, we need to recognize what's the impact of the operations and policies on the environment. What's our current anticipated situation with climate science regarding climate change? We have to plan for it, we have to connect with others, because these are all interrelated, and to work with each other on solutions and ultimately to impact this community. Thirdly, every policy we examine and we're looking toward needs to deal with equity. And we need to make sure that the policies that we adopt, the indicators, the evidence that we show, ask the questions, how do we ensure that these actions we're taking are equitable? We don't want to have any different types of impact toward underrepresented groups or populations by any policies and decisions. You know, we're going to make sure that this is inclusive, this increases opportunity and benefit for all, not just for a few. And finally, just because we have over 12,000 students and staff together, tremendous impact on this community, we've got to build on what we already do, but also look for partners like the city of Eau Claire, Xcel Energy. There are opportunities that we've already sought. I've had really interesting conversations and look forward to future partnerships. So looking at indicator one and two, and it's nice that we have student representatives right here, and I bring up the same thing to Samuel, one of the things that, if some of you read Wisconsin School News, in the most recent edition in September, they talked about what are some ideas for districts and schools? Now, granted, we're a very large system, eighth largest in the state, but it really had some very good, not just school-based, but district-based opportunities. One is to get a committee together, and they talked about keeping it somewhat small, but who are some very key players? So I list there, the city of Eau Claire, University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, and adding CBTC with that, Xcel Energy, obviously, staff, family members, community members. And, you know, this is where, when we meet with, or when I meet with our student representatives, I'd ask you, you know, what do the environmental clubs look like at Memorial and North, and is there one at Eau Claire Virtual School or McKinley? Even at the middle schools too, I looked at Principal Wyberg back there too. Don't worry if you don't have one, but those are the types of questions I'd ask. And who are some really kids that are, who are some kids that are really committed to a climate, to this type of OE3, this engaging work? And if you were to, you know, if you were to share that, oh, you know, I know two or three students that would be really interested, I'd love to hear from them. We want student voice in this. So, and I also put on their student transit, and when I get to the component about transportation, you'll see why. The second indicator is providing educational and career exploration opportunities for our students with, in regard to energy efficiency. You know, it was really obvious when I came here with the Public Schools Foundation, the impact that the solar panel project with the Trwilliger, that generous donation and the implementation, installation, I should say, too, where we were up, I think it was, wasn't it snowing in October, where we were up on the roof at Memorial, and, you know, talking with Aaron Layde and Jake Behrens, I actually saw Jake Behrens today, and he was mentioning something to another coach, fall coach at North today, about what the students are doing, and what they're learning, and what they talk about with the solar. So anyway, those are the types of things that really catch kids, that really make it very interesting. You know, we need to provide more of those, and whatever we're providing, we keep adding to it and improving as much as we can. So that's that, kind of that first introductory piece. The next part would be, within six months of adoption of the policy, superintendent's responsible for releasing draft plan and for achieving the goals. Now, we adopted the coherent governance process and these policies in April of 2021. My assumption was that, once we went through this process with my interpretation and the indicators, and ultimately the evidence, I believe, on October 4th, correct, Maida? Is that from six months from then? Because if we were to put something out there next month, and I was way off base, well, it would be a very interesting meeting. You probably need to take me into recess, and that's what's got to happen. But ultimately, my goal would be, and this would be an area where we're not compliant right now, but, you know, according to my interpretation is, or the indicator is, I would release a draft plan for achieving these goals by March 1st of 2022, six months, or approximately six months, a little bit before, from October 4th. So skipping down a little bit, this is where we get into the four subheadings. Following the release of that draft plan, I'm responsible for releasing the updated and revised plan annually until the overall goal has been achieved, and we will address the following areas. The first one is biodiversity. And obviously, that is, you know, that is our board's language of biodiversity. What I did is I took the definition from the city of Eau Claire. And when it puts down opportunity sector for biodiversity, and I use that same definition, the strategies which increase the natural carbon sinks in Eau Claire by enhancing local vegetation and natural landscape. So with my interpretation of it, you know, it may be different at each school and property we have in the district, just because we have tremendous, we have very large buildings like a Memorial or a North, and we might have like a Roosevelt or a Flynn, that's a bit smaller, obviously quite a bit smaller. We've got control of that. And we've got opportunities, we can always do better, doesn't matter. And the relationships that we need with other significant partners like the city of Eau Claire, the university, CBTC, and Xcel, where we can have, you know, we can be asset-based rather than just, wow, we're just managing these properties. So if, Maida, if you'd be able to scroll down to some of those indicators, and I know you had read, you had read these, and I'm not going to go through all six, but, you know, really, monitoring, I think we're kind of like with our achievement data that Principal Oldenburg had just spoken about, and Kim and Michelle Radke, we're data-rich, but we're analysis-poor. So in speaking with Kim Kohler, Abby Johnson, people in buildings and grounds, what I can say is, we do have data out there, but we don't publish it, we don't make it transparent or public, and then we may not build upon it. And it's no shame, no blame, it's just how we are. And so let's work on improving that. So that's what those indicators, many of them, you know, it's interesting, every different piece of property that we have, there's a different bit of a footprint, different ages of buildings, different efficiencies. So, you know, it's going to be really interesting with most of these indicators to, okay, where are we? And then how do we improve? So if we scroll down, now even we get to an indicator six support, local food, local producers, urban farmers, you know, that's something too from city of Eau Claire, I've talked to Josh Buchenberg, Director of Nutrition Services, just about what we do. And although we work with Indian Head as a distributor, you know, he said, you know, Mike, we really haven't measured that, but we definitely can. So even if it's starting that, that's, you know, there are some, we do have some local options, but we just haven't measured it, or we haven't gauged it. The next component about admissions, you know, we want to maintain our strong record participating in energy efficiency programs. I shared, I think I shared some of this, once again, opportunity sector for emissions. And then my interpretation, two items to note, knowledge of our power source and efficiency we seek. For you to scroll down a little bit more, you know, we can't, with 20 of our schools, we can't have an indicator that says, "The district will audit and improve all 20 schools at one time." It's just not feasible. We couldn't possibly do that. But one thing that this committee could really help with was, okay, let's say we take indicator two, commit to auditing 20% of our buildings each year, which ones would they be? Would they be the largest buildings? Would they be the oldest buildings? Would they be the least efficient buildings for energy? I don't know. But that's something that I think we really need to look at, to examine. So, you know, looking through those indicators, improving our energy efficiency in all schools, I know there's the data there, promoting and sharing impact of the motion sensors we have across Promoting and sharing impact of the motion sensors we have across the district, water fixtures, windows, those three items alone, it's a tremendous impact in the entire district. Solar installation, just to highlight what happened last year with North and Memorial, and then to expand that. So in indicator seven, again, we've got students here, increase that awareness of energy efficiency among our students. Where are we right now, and then what do we hope to grow? And then at how young? The next one, we're transportation. This, if you look at the city of Eau Claire documents, you know, the greenhouse gas emissions as a result, the portion of moving people and goods around the city, innovative solutions for our district are needed to reduce carbon, improve human health. You know, the city-states as well, it's quite possibly the largest environmental impact on our committee. Rivaling, actually, it's probably overtaking our actual building operations. We've got 11,000 students plus 1,400 staff. We're traveling from, you know, areas in the region. We've got to be aware of the significant footprint. And yes, there are some barriers, and there are some really good things that our district does, safe routes to school, you know, that's a somewhat consistent, you know, statewide with grants and such, and promoting certain days like that or certain weeks. But that's the first indicator, and sometimes it's just not possible in, you know, with the age of the student, or with where the student is located on a busy thoroughfare. So anyway, you know, that's one example. The second indicator about, you know, future new school construction, location-efficient properties, transportation routes that are innovative and efficient. Feasibility for fleet vehicle purchases would be number three. Consulting with utility providers. And number five is probably the most important for us is including Jim Fai and student transit in our committee to assist and to prepare to implement our goals and commitments. It's a tremendous amount for transportation. And then finally, waste and recycling. You know, the waste that's sent to our local landfill with methane emissions contributing to global warming, reducing our waste with recycling and other measures is a key focus area for all of our facilities. It is somewhat of a smaller portion, but it's still, you know, it's still something we've made strides on in past years, but there's still tremendous potential for us, and it's a great thing to do for the community. And those indicators, you know, identify what those items are, develop our baseline for consumption, not just for school, but for the district, you know, share those results annually, be transparent with them. Lifecycle with electronics, I mean, I know from our technology department that there is, and they do recycle. And then food waste, it's really interesting to listen to Josh about that, reduction efforts, any consultation with outside vendors. And then four and five, once again, waste and recycling. But number five, when we have any construction or demolition materials, how can we handle those and how can we recycle more? So finally, and then I'll look forward to comments, questions, but this is the most important part, I think, is that I can alter indicators. I can maybe provide different evidence when I come back on the fourth, based on what I hear from all of you. And then when I would, the last part would be when I would publish the annual update of the progress. Would we match it up to that draft plan on March 1st of 2022? What would you think is the board would be a good time, what would be adequate timing for that, to share with the community, once again, to be transparent? So that's where we are. And sorry for talking so long, but now it's my time to kind of take some notes, and now you understand kind of what I've done a bit, some folks that I've talked to in the community, getting resources from other districts. I think I did sign up, made a kind of test to this, we've got superintendent's conference next week. There was a part on energy efficiency and what districts are doing too, that I was interested. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with all of you and hope to hear from you now about certain efforts you'd like to see, or evidence you'd like me to present, or anything of that nature. Once again, I'll finish up and be quiet.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Thank you for the work that's already gone into this. We know that OE2 and OE3 are ones that don't have easy models across even our partner districts for this, so just thank you for putting this together for us to talk about tonight. We'll open the floor now to comments and questions. Richard Lyons.
It's a very ambitious plan that you've put out, and I'm glad that you called that March 1st date to everyone's attention, because from this board member's perspective, that's too early to have that draft planned. You mentioned at the end of your comments that you're going to a superintendent conference, find out what other folks are doing. And to have a plan on how we will be carbon neutral by 2050, I think is going to take much more due diligence than we're going to be able to put together within five and a half months, just my opinion.
Well, I would agree with you, Mr. Lyons, and I would, that would be something where we would not be compliant, where, say, here's this plan that it's going to be by 2050. Absolutely. And that would be something where we are not compliant, but here are the steps we're taking to do so, but absolutely.
I'm really excited to see the 20% of the buildings that will have energy audits. I think that that will shed light on where our ability to really impact carbon neutrality is. I would think that this building that we're sitting in here right now is probably a major energy hog. And as we've been talking about the referendum and some of the things that could be in that referendum, the great thing about doing new buildings and addressing infrastructure in a green way, because it often saves green. And so if we can really impact our utility spend through those audits, and it could really be a selling point, one of the stories that we're telling in this coming referendum, because we saw public support for those solar panels that we put on Memorial, with people including myself and a number of board members chipping in to help the funding of that project. And I think that this is a really exciting plan, but I'd really like to see maybe in May 1st, or I just think March 1st is very aggressive, is some meat and some details, and I'm only speaking really about the infrastructure and the facilities and that in comment. It's exciting. I, very good.
How far out of compliance is the district currently?
Just to clarify before Superintendent Johnson asks, when Superintendent Johnson, because you're brand new to our governance model, when superintendent says out of compliance, he means with the policy as written by the board? So the board says, for example, you have to have a plan within six months, and it has to be published for the district? Well, we don't have a plan right now, and we don't have, you know, a publication at this point. So the district is not complying with what the board has demanded. Now, maybe I'm giving you more than, maybe you already understood that, but just for everybody's clarity and those people who are at home. So when we do talk about how far out of not being compliant, it is not a statement as to our energy efficiency as a district, which I'm sure these audits will show, that we are not as efficient as we would like to be. But just to clarify that that's what the non-compliance is, it's to what the board has asked for our operational expectation in this region. But your question still stands, I just wanted to make sure that terms work, and we can talk more about the way the policy review works as we go forward. But Superintendent Johnson.
I'd say very few read. I'd say maybe a third. And that's okay, because we need to be able to tell where we presently are, and this is very new, even though some of the efforts with energy savings and efficiency have gone on for quite some time here in Eau Claire. But, for example, you will see, you know, I have not published, or, and the district hasn't published ever, an annual update progress related to energy efficiency, to my knowledge. Kim Kohler has worked with buildings and grounds in her time, I don't know if that's ever occurred, and I'm sure board members would be able to share. Go ahead, Kim, if you want to add, that's my knowledge, read.
Yeah, I think that we have done parts and pieces of audits, but nothing across the board, and nothing that's like, we'll do it at a certain time interval to stay on top of it. So we do know that we have energy-saving measures, especially like Commissioner Lyons said, when we invest in our buildings, we know that often that investment will pay for itself with energy savings per time, and we calculate those costs, but we haven't calculated those costs and then published the results of those. We just know that we have the potential to be able to do it.
Okay. And again, to establish that baseline, but then improve from year to year is most critical for me, and I believe for the board and the public, rather than let's lower the bar on our indicators so then we can state that we've met certain benchmarks. I think, you know, based on what the board has shared with me, the discussions I have learned, how the policy is written, we want some bold change. So, you know, it's up to me then to have my interpretation, but then to hear from the board and others about, you know, the indicators and how best to share that evidence and then go to it, so.
When is your deadline to roughly estimate the emissions for the district, within 50% of the true value?
Good question. I'm not, 50% of.
Within 95% confidence that you are neither 150%, 50% above or 50% below the true value of the emissions for the district?
Like Principal Oldenburg had said before, very good question. I just, I would have to probably ask that question of city of Eau Claire, Xcel Energy, you know, that committee that we need to form to get a true handle of where we are with our data presently as well. I don't think we can answer that until we do those types of audits and determine where we are, not just as schools, but the entire system.
I might suggest that that be part of the plan, to have that particular benchmark worked into the plan. And I have Dr. Bika, and then Commissioner Clemens is in queue, so Dr. Bika, I'll turn it to you.
It's more just a comment. So I served as the school board's representative. The Eau Claire is developing its renewable energy action plan. I represented the district, some people know that, probably some people don't. Xcel Energy was one of the facilitators of that initiative, and the representative for Eau Claire Schools sought me out to talk about a long history of actually very progressive action in this area. Something Superintendent Johnson mentioned earlier, that we often do have a lot of data, perhaps not a lot of analyses or presentation of that work, but we are by no means starting from scratch. This has been one of the values of the district for a long time, and there actually is a tremendous amount of data and analysis from Xcel Energy, and they really spoke that we really are outstanding in a number of ways. And so that, a lot of people are new, and so it's going to be to really look at those data and get a better understanding. By no means are we at some sort of baseline. This is a multi-year effort that has been significant.
Commissioner Clemens.
First thing I'd like to say is that if anyone's an NPR junkie like me or reads a lot of the news, there was a recent climate report that was presented within the last few months that just emphasized that 2050 is way too late, like if we want to avoid catastrophic damage from a changing climate that's already changing, like we probably have 10 years, not 30, to do this. So to pursue this with all due urgency. The other is, this is an area where I've been a practicing professional for about 15 years, and like Lori, I was on that committee for the city of Eau Claire, and it took them over 18 months to really muddle through that, because it's relatively easy, air quotes, easy, to go to Xcel Energy, say, give me your energy bills, and then they can compute your carbon impact relatively quickly. It's all those secondary impacts from people commuting, the carbon impact of food and things like that, that are going to be very difficult to evaluate with precision. We're going to have to, you know, essentially use modeling and estimates to figure that out. And that's really going to be the hardest not to crack, is, as Superintendent Johnson mentioned, we have over 12,000 souls that, most of whom travel to and from a physical site five days a week, and that's going to likely be the biggest impact. And we can influence their behavior only to a certain degree. So I think that's where a lot of our biggest impact can be, is through those behavior change things that each of us individually do. And, you know, I think that a lot of what's here, that I expect will be here in our plan, are things that corporate America, university campuses, a very select few number of public school districts have worked on for 20 years or longer. And so there's an established practice as to what do you do for building efficiency, for example. Some of these other things, like how do you measure impacts on biodiversity? You know, that's going to be an ongoing process, but this is really ambitious, and what I've shared with Superintendent Johnson previously is, you know, we just need to go for it, and we know that it's going to be something that's going to be iterative over time as we understand what our impact is. Because frankly, we, I don't know that anyone can claim to know with great degree of certainty what carbon neutral means, because some of that technology doesn't exist. But we do know how to get pretty close, and I think it's a matter of focus and investment where it makes sense. So I think that we can show that what we've done already, both from a measurement perspective, but also from a qualitative perspective, and we're going to have to continue to show where we can improve over time. So I don't, I want to ensure that the first plan, we don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Like, we need to get, we need to get a report out there, we need to start making, or continue to make changes, knowing that some of these areas are going to be pretty fuzzy as we learn generally what this means, because we don't have a sustainability or energy guru on staff whose job it is to, you know, focus on these outcomes every day. Maybe, and sometime in the future we could, but, you know, I think this is where we need to go forth and do good work. And then every year, we're making it part of our evaluation to make sure that we're showing progress towards these goals.
Commissioner Zer, and then we'll go Dr. Johnson.
So the thing that I'm stuck on, and the thing I keep thinking about is indicator two up there, under the first goal. And I think one of the things that we have in spades are, I think we're looking at those 12,000 people that we have as some sort of burden to this work, and I think it could actually be a net benefit, because what we have in those, at least, you know, 11,000 of them are eager, young, I mean, in 10 years, to Commissioner Clemens' points, those are our third graders, right? We have those, we have the future of our community by and large. And I think that we have their, we have their hearts and their minds and their, and their homes, and the impacts that they will have as they grow and they age. And I think that we can leverage, as a district, at least I hope that we do. I hope that we leverage our impact as educators as much as we look, so how can we change what the grown-ups are doing in the big machine of the district, but how can we inspire and educate our students to change the world around them outside the walls of their school, right? How can we, you know, I think the, like, the most joy I've ever experienced, ever, was kid, like my little, like, three and four-year-olds in my classroom, like, composting? And, you know, Miss Erica, those compostable! You know, and like, they go home and they share that information and... And, and the parents, many of, many of whom transitioned to composting at home because their students would, you know, their little kids would bring that home. And I think, you know, the same with increasing biodiversity of your home space. And there's, there's a lot of these things that we can, and maybe the measurable impact of that is not as significant, but I think it is as tangible to, to what we do for the future of our community and for the future of our, of our world. And we need to make sure that, that we spend as much time and emphasis on that component as we do the, how many, how many trips did the bus make to our school back and forth every day? So, you know, I, I don't know. That's what, that's what keeps sticking in my brain.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I guess for me, I, this OE3, actually seeing this a lot more than I actually would have anticipated, especially with the, with the indicators. Yeah, I, I guess I, I'll, there's still the cautionary tale. And I think it was the same comments that I made as we were constructing this. So this guy like, for me is, all of this comes at a, at a, at a cost, financial cost. And, you know, with that financial cost, what will we not do in other areas? And I, I, you know, even though I know the grave certainty, you know, that Commissioner Clemens spoke about, for me, it's that fine balance. And so for me, what are those things that, that are cost effective, that we're willing to put the cost in, taking away for something, but balancing out, I think with some of the stuff that Commissioner Zer just spoke about, those other small, tangible, inexpensive pieces. Because this is, this is very ambitious, but this is also, this is a cost. And I guess for me, I, I, as much as I, I, I value climate change, I believe climate change is real. I also value the, the, the learning experiences of, of, of our students and supporting students and the staff that actually teach our students. And if I had to choose, I still choose the latter. The, the student learning system and the supporting of staff and teachers with cost and funding, more than this. And so as we're, as we're navigating this, you know, it'd be interesting just to kind of see those, the, the financial impacts of, of those components that we, that we can also have that to guide our decision-making process. Thank you.
Dr. Bika.
I have a couple of questions about indicators. So one of the things that came to mind is the status. Are we getting a facilities director? And I thought about even creating this, like where we are at this point in that process of that, so that personnel piece. I wondered, could or should a facilities director, the expertise of that person be included here as an indicator of some kind? In addition to wanting CBTC with partners, I wondered about adding someone from the county board. In transportation, I wondered about city. How can city busing help? We mentioned new buildings and new construction. I'm wondering about existing construction, education incentives to significantly reduce driving to school, the current size of our parking lots. Does something like the no busing radius contribute in the transportation sector? I don't know.
Thank you. I will second, one of my comments or questions was about adding somebody from the county. And I think the buildings and grounds directors is a good one. I had, you know, listening to Commissioner Lyons and Dr. Johnson talk about costs and thinking about what are the buildings that get audited first for the energy audit? I might just put out as a suggestion that the buildings that get audited as soon as possible are those that we are considering updating in the upcoming referendum. So to my mind, that's Oak North and Memorial, Roosevelt, potentially then also Menaveu Mans and Putnam. Unless I'm wrong, and Kim's nodding. So I think those are the ones that we've been talking about. I didn't know if Demo and Friends had additional, you know, had any additional meats that.
I think the only one that you.
Of South. See, I was just going to get in to make sure you weren't just feeding it to me. So, I mean, that's more than 20%. But at the same time, if we have that energy audit, I think that that will be a tool for us to not only potentially ask for specific dollars to go into that as we renovate those buildings, but also then to make the case that those dollars in fact pay for themselves and that if we pay for them upfront, that we can save some of, that then we have ultimately savings that we can then redirect into that student experience that Dr. Johnson is, is coming up with. I am also, I just want to overall admit, submit my, my thanks for this. This is, really to me, it solidifies the good work that's, that's being done and bringing those indicators out and really setting them forward. I think that there might be some of them that we can set more specific goals with the indicators, but I will, I'll just submit those afterwards. There's nothing that needs to be brought up right now. But I'm, I, the last two things. One is, I, I think I wouldn't mind having it on March 1st. Because as I think it was Commissioner Clement said, let's not let perfect be the enemy of good. I think if we have a phase one plan and that plan gets updated by, you know, the next annual, or maybe it's updated in when we review this, you know, in October of, what are we, in September, October? Yeah, so October of '22, maybe it's updated. And we, you know, we've revamped it because we've continued to work on it since March. But I would like to have something, I think, that, or the urgency of the fact that even though our, our commitment as a board and district was to 2050, the sooner we can get moving on it, the, the better our impact will be. And then the final question that you had asked was at the bottom, when should we publish the information for the public? My initial thought when you asked that question was maybe in September, a month ahead of the evaluation, the monitoring report. So that, that's an easy indicator to say, hey, it went up in September. Had a chance to look at it, we've complied with that particular thing. That's not, that's just the, the thing that comes to mind as I. So I guess those, that's the extent of my comments. But thank you for this report. It is frankly exhilarating to see us taking this seriously and also considering the impacts that it's having on our students as well as our community. With that, it looks like there are no additional requests for comments. So thank you, Superintendent Johnson. We look forward to seeing you back October 4th. And I think just for the board's perspective, you know, because we already know that the district will not be in compliance with several of these items, one thing to consider is whether we want to evaluate at that time, even on our calendar, or whether we want to set a reevaluation date and not accept the report. At that, obviously we'll hear it and talk about it. And we could file it as compliant with the noted exceptions. But another thing that we could do is say, let's reevaluate when we actually have the first draft of the plan or something like that. There are options to consider as we can, as we monitor at that first October meeting. Something to be in your mind as you think about how we want to approach it going forward. At this time, we would move on to our board development topic for tonight, which is referendum, community listening session planning. Before we do that, I briefly want to ask the board's opinion, whether or not, given the time, whether or not we want to take this item for tonight. I'll note that Abby Johnson is unable to join us tonight. And obviously, I, I know Superintendent Johnson, you, you told me that you were prepared to deliver some of those, some of her remarks. But because of, because of the time and it's a discussion that I, we do need to have because we must get this referendum work done. I don't know that it's critical tonight. Commissioner Lyons, I'll specifically ask you as the head of the budget development committee, what your thoughts would be? Should we have this discussion now? Or would it be appropriate to table?
I think it would be appropriate to table. One of the things that was said within budget development was that with the exception of Commissioner Harder, this is our first referendum for the other budget committee, development committee members as well as the, as the board. So the information that Abby was going to present that was both historical and educational in terms of what is entailed in a referendum, I think really needs her perspective as someone that was here back in the day.
With that, I would eventually ask you to motion to table this item till a future meeting.
I would motion that we table board item 10, a review and a presentation of board development for a referendum to.
Future meeting.
Future meeting.
Can you have a second? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, we'll discuss at, but, sorry, at agenda setting tomorrow morning, when to reinclude this on the agenda. And we'll be able to hopefully talk about it then, especially when Abby can join us and Commissioner Harder, for that matter, who's also not here tonight. That then leads us to our board debrief. And I'm blanking. It's been so long since our agenda setting. Who was our third member at the last agenda setting?
Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you.
I didn't know it all.
I'm really glad you're here.
I have it written down.
Thank you. So then I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Lyons, to do a run-through for the board of our, something that we thought we did well as a board in our governance structure and think something that we could just need to work on.
So we've been doing this, I think, for several months for the, the new student commissioner benefit. At the end of each meeting, we reflect on things that the board or the meeting did well and things that maybe, there isn't always something that would have gone differently. But, so it's our opportunity to kind of do some self-reflection on, on, on the board and pros and cons. Each board member spends a few minutes kind of giving a few comments and then it moves on to the next board member. So I will, I will start with Commissioner Zer to the right.
Something that I thought went well. I don't know. I, I feel like I'm still really, not struggling, but I don't know, on a learning curve with the new governance model. And sometimes I feel like I, I've got it and I understand how it all works. And then the next time I'm kind of like, what comes next? So I'm still, I'm still kind of figuring out what to offer in these first drafts, right? Like what do we, what do we bring? I think, you know, we heard like Big Pie in the Sky comments and we heard very specific things. And so I'm still, I just feel like I'm kind of, it was a learning meeting for me where I just enjoyed listening to the dialogue of what, what you all were bringing. I think that was the most, that was the thing I felt so good tonight was just to hear all, all of your, all of your contributions. So it's helping me form an idea of how we function now in this, in this governance.
I guess we'll move right to left. And I, I think one of the things that I think went well is is adjourning the meeting for 10 minutes to get back on track and reset ourselves. I know that there's a, a lot of opinions on, on the mask mandates. And we're just trying to do our best in a, in a healthy and safe environment. So I, I, I think that that, that went well. I think tonight's meeting went very well. And I, I can't think of anything that I would say that, that would, that's attractive. But I will move on to Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, you know, it, it, it's interesting. You know, I, I, I share, I share some of the sentiments as Commissioners Zer about, you know, I think I have a, I'm uncomfortable, I think, as we navigate this model. But it, it seems like the model works when, 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 when issues discussed and our topics discussed are not necessarily controversial, but it's kind of, it's, it's really no ill intent in terms of it's just, it's really just talking, talking about costs, it seems to, to kind of flow well. I was, I, I guess that I, I will reiterate my, my utter surprise with OE3. And I thought that was like done very, done very well. Things that we, you know, continue to work on. I think as we navigate the, the difficult environment of being a, being a school board during the pandemic, operating with certain, certain types of mandates, it's kind of really allowing ourselves the ability just to continue to, to, to get through the work in spite of, in spite of differences, in spite of the, the emotions that are, are out, that are out there. And I think we are really doing as good a job that we, that we can, given, given the circumstances and the heightened awareness of individuals on, on, on both sides. But yeah, it seems like when, when, you know, certain topics, policies, pieces that, that there's, I think general, general agreement amongst all of us that we can definitely work on this and build off it, it seems to run, seems to run really smoothly. So those are my comments. Thank you.
President. Jordan. Thank you. So I think the thing that, looking at how our meeting ran tonight really stood out is, I, I think a little bit tied to what, Dr. Johnson, you just mentioned, but that, that we are starting to operate and focus on the things. I think the board, and quite honestly, our student representatives tonight, here tonight, showed the, the commitment to preparing ahead of time, being ready to talk about these, these topics, being engaged with them. And the idea is that we're doing that work in the, in the background so that we can be focused on the policies, so that we can be focused on the results. And so I would like to commend all of my colleagues here. And I know this is time for the board to reflect on itself. I also want to commend the administration because I think we've seen iteratively changes in how information is presented, changes in how it's communicated, changes in when it's communicated in a way that is making this board work function positively. That was certainly a great hope of mine going into a new governance model that we would be able to act in this way. And I think all of you, my colleagues on the board, have really shown that a commitment to try it, even when we're not entirely sure, is it the right way to go? Is it going to be effective? I, I really, that really stood out for me tonight. And I look forward to our next two meetings when we'll actually be doing the report, the monitoring report for OE2 and OE3, two of the critical commitments to our district. And a much less grand thing about things that we can continue working on, it's of course time management. And we did have, you know, a 10 minutes, you know, a recess tonight and some other things. But that's a challenge for me as someone who's always on the agenda setting to make sure that we make, we have ample time to discuss. But also there's always a lot of board work that we could be working on. So while I think it was the right move to, to table tonight, that's something I'd like to make sure we don't have to do as much in the future. Thank you. Commissioner Clemens.
Well, I think my comments go to bringing in our student reps. It's a welcome addition to our governance and our dialogue. So welcome. It's the first time I've actually been in person at a meeting where we, where, as a board member, where our student reps have been present because of, because of COVID. So I, I thank you, Lori, for whatever preparation you may have, you may have provided. Because what's really stuck with me was some of the comments that our, our previous student reps slapped us with at the end of the spring, how they felt like their, their roles could have been more meaningful. And so I, I'm going to have to review my notes to make sure that we're, we're functioning as a board in a way that empowers you to, to really be effective in your roles. And I think this is kind of diving right in, in a very interesting time. So I, I think it went well. But I just want to make sure that that continues to be a really cognizant part of how we run our meetings and how we structure our meetings is that our student reps are a valuable part of our dialogue. I don't know that I really have anything, Commissioner Lyons, that I think didn't go well. I think it was uneventful for me in terms of that regard. I think we, we muddled through some policy dialogue. And I think we'll, we'll become increasingly. And I think we'll, we'll become increasingly more comfortable with that as we figure out how to prepare for these topics as they come up.
Commissioner Vika.
I'm really happy the student representatives are here too. Welcome. I'm also very happy to have students back leading the budget of leaders. I missed that tremendously, I realized. I, I don't have much new to add. I just want to second what Chair Nordean said about the kind of presentations. The presentations have always been effective, but something is changing. And I think about with the high school data tonight, with the emphasis on the multi-level systems of support and it's a focus on results, it's a, it's different. Like something is different now. And it, it's, that's, I think attributable to the change in governance model. I, tonight, I really realized how much I like the new agenda format. So for example, the superintendent's consent agenda, the whole structure of it is really working well. And I particularly liked in this superintendent consent agenda, the information that we got on the budget adjustments, like highly effective. Never saw that before. Much appreciated.
So in this is a time for board, the board to self-reflect. We won't ask you for reflections, but I think that's probably a topic that we could approach at agenda setting too, whether we'd like to have some feedback from student representatives about what the board did well tonight. It may mean you have to read a couple of books that Dr. Johnson would be happy to loan to you on coherent governance.
Most definitely.
He probably won't even ask for them back.
Will not, actually.
But I wanted to say thank you once again for, for being here. And thank you, Representative Schmitz, for attending. There's, it's never a time, you know, you'd notice as we went through the discussion items tonight that sometimes a board member has a comment or a question and sometimes we don't. So there's never any pressure that you have to be in on each one. And we really want, when you have a question or something to add, things do. But don't feel like you must because it's, it's really personal to just. As we, as I call for a motion to adjourn tonight, I just want to thank specifically many members of our staff tonight and Dr. Vika, who did a lot of work to ensure that this meeting could happen effectively and efficiently. And that effort does not go unnoticed by the board and I'm sure by the community. So thank you very much to all of you who helped us make that a reality tonight. At this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I would.
Check. All those in favor, please say aye. We're adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.